Common council meeting for November 3rd. We'll start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next on the agenda, we have a presentation tonight from Alliance. Scott Aaron is in the audience. If you want to step up here to the microphone.
Sure.
Well, hold on, I gotta show everybody.
Hi, my name is Scott Aaron. I'm with the Alliance Media Group. We'd like to publicly recognize Gavin Aden for completing our apprenticeship program. It is a two-year program where we train wastewater employees that are kind of newer to the industry to learn the, I know in previous past operators who are usually given books, hey, figure it out, go pass your test, good luck. The Alliance recommends that as kind of an issue, so we help train these new employees to not only be competent on the job day in and day out, but also become licensed operators and become assets to towns. Gavin excelled in that program where he completed well over 4,000 on-the-job hours along with 293 relatable technical instructions over that two years. He's also a licensed Class III wastewater operator, not very many of those in the state. The city of Butler has also recognized the beauties of this program and has currently has Kendall Cheyline in the program. So hopefully in another two years, we make another presentation there for that. So we want to publicly recognize Gavin with this certificate of completion. Mainly, I gotta get a picture to prove that I was here. No, I'm in enough pictures, that's all.
Awesome, man. Hey, congrats, you earned it.
Thank you.
Gavin, what do you got in that door? Probably should share with us. All right, our turn next. Yeah, once again, thank you Scott for that. And thank you Gavin, a long hour, appreciate what you've done with that program.
Thank you.
Well, you said hopefully two years from now, we'll have another graduate coming through there. All right, one other thing to get to. Does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments pertaining to tonight's agenda? We will move on to the soaring end of two firefighters today, Ron. Those will be our on-call, part-time on-call, correct? So first one will be Malin Schmucker. You want to come up here first?
All the way up here. Inside him.
Yeah, over here.
I am Malin Schmucker.
I am Malin Schmucker.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Indiana.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Indiana.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Butler.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Butler.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of a firefighter.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of a firefighter.
For the city of Butler and the Butler Wilmington fire territory.
For the city of Butler and the Butler Wilmington fire territory.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Next one will be Zachary Jones. Hi, Zachary Jones.
Hi, Zachary Jones.
You solemnly swear, and is followed by? That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Indiana.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Indiana.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Butler.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Butler.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of a firefighter for the city of Butler.
For a firefighter for the city of Butler.
And the Butler Wilmington fire territory.
And the Butler Wilmington fire territory.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Ron, anything you want to say before we excuse them and then go?
Congratulations, gentlemen, thank you. You can have fun.
All right, you guys want to exit if you can unless you want to stick around for the entire meeting.
Thank all of you guys.
All right, we'll move on. Next on the agenda will be the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the previous minutes.
A motion second to approve the minutes from October 20th, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There is none, that motion will pass. We will launch to propose ordinances and resolutions. The first one will be ordinance 1805, employee salaries for 2026. This will be third and final reading.
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 1805, employee salaries for 2026 on third and final reading.
Motion in the second to approve ordinance 1805 as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There is none, that motion will pass. Next will be ordinance 1806, elected and appointed salaries for 2026, third and final reading.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 1806, elected and appointed salaries for 2026, third and final reading.
A motion in second to approve ordinance 1806, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There is none, that motion will pass. I will just add to that a little bit, the part of the elected salaries and stuff like that. This is the second time, I believe, in this 2022 that elected officials have not taken any increase here. That we're freezing it basically and going to look out to see what Senate one does later on down the line. So as always, I think we've always decided that employees were first and not our people second. So thank you everyone for that. Next one will be ordinance 1811, prohibit the use of public records for commercial purposes.
First reading, so are there questions?
What all does that entail? I'd like to know because I get a lot of.
I know, we get a lot of.
Yes. Like there are constantly people that you can tell they're digging. They're like, can you look at all of these things and put a ton of time into this so that I can sell this information? And it drives me nuts.
Uh huh. Yes.
So what all are these?
This one's state, then we don't have to.
Oh yes, 100%.
It's beyond.
Yes, I had one today that I sent to you.
Maybe I just need to read through, but it's one of those where I want to make sure it covers.
Yeah, Don has looked at it.
Okay.
So, yes.
I just don't want to get in that scenario where I get a bunch of requests that I have to fulfill, even though I shouldn't, for doing work, what happens outside of the city. Okay, perfect, appreciate it.
Yeah, so I didn't know. Braxton kind of puts a fear in his soul of not opening up. Spam emails, I can receive some, I just maybe believe.
Yeah.
A lot of them are spam.
Yeah.
Really, you can tell it's a mass email.
Oh yeah. Yeah, send it out to every community.
This ordinance is scary. I mean, the amount of information that you can turn on with somebody is just, that's scary.
Well, we live in today.
And it's, yeah, it's definitely, most, I. I was shocked when I read.
It's the first time I understood it in the first reading. I'm getting better. And I copied the stuff that I wrote from another city, so, yes.
I think we gotta do that work, Chris.
Is anybody on Senate questions? I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance 1811, prohibit the use of public records for commercial purposes, first reading.
Second.
Motion in second to approve ordinance 1811 on first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There is none, that motion will pass. Get it, we'll pass it on the other one while you're over here.
I make a motion. To suspend. No, not on the second, just for the third. I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 1811 on a second reading.
A motion and a second to approve ordinance 1811 on second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There is none, that motion will pass.
I'll make a motion, suspend the rules. Suspend the rules to adopt ordinance 1811, prohibit the use of public records for commercial purposes, first reading.
Second.
Motion in second to suspend the rules to do first reading on ordinance 1811, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There is none, that motion will pass.
Yes, and now maybe.
Pass the ordinance.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 1811 to prohibit the use of public records for commercial purposes.
Motion in second to approve ordinance 1811 on third and final reading, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There is none, that motion will pass.
Thank you.
The Department of Parks, we will start with Ron.
I have nothing from council. I think I've done enough, Dan.
All right. Andrew.
The only thing I have is just to make the council aware, this Thursday, we will be, Plan Commission will be having a public hearing at 6:30 in order to pass our inter-local agreement with the county on our extraterritorial jurisdiction. It's something, as we're now, the second part of that is passing our comprehensive plan. Obviously, it comes to the council for final vote. You guys, we scheduled a public hearing for the 17th, that meeting, for you guys to hear this. But Plan Commission will go through the inter-local agreement. I want to say Chris said it was 2019 or 2020 or something. They changed it and you have to have a formal inter-local agreement. So it's all the same things we're doing today, but we have to formalize it. It came from a boilerplate ETJ agreement. We changed very little, gave ourselves a little bit more wiggle room on sewers, sewer lines and stuff and to say that if we don't want someone, you know, to have to push someone to this, we would never do it. So we gave ourselves a little more wiggle room to say, no, you're fine, to the citizens, gave them a little bit. Yeah, we didn't want to force too much on them. So that public hearing happened 6:30 Thursday here. The meeting will start at 6 o'clock so that we can talk a little bit more about it. Another thing that we added, the comprehensive plan has been around for a while, it never got passed. We are finally gonna hopefully get this through. The only thing we really added to that was a future land use map. Comprehensive plans require a future land use map, but we didn't have that in this. So that explains, in general, we would see this area being a good place for housing, this area being a good place for industrial, so that type of stuff. But those are the two things we're having the public hearing for on the 6th, and then it'll come to you guys at 17.
All right. Thank you. Matt.
I have nothing for the council, other than to say that ordinance 1811, good job on passing that, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Stuart. After many, many months of telling the people about parking in yards, parking along the streets, parking wherever they want, I have started to write tickets because there are people that are just not willing to do it. So unfortunately, those tickets are, you know, the fees, you know, the price 25, but you add court costs, all of a sudden, that's a $170 ticket. I'm begging people not to make me write a ticket, and they're basically telling me I don't care. So I've had to write some tickets, and I really don't like doing that. But they're not giving me a choice, so I've had to write some tickets and, like I said, I haven't had much to do with grass or, you know, there's been, you know, cities been looking pretty decent. Had to write some tickets for overgrown lots and different things like that. One entity seems to be causing us a lot of problems. We'll maybe explore some of that later, but other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Braxton.
Nothing for the council.
Andy.
I have nothing for the city council.
Okay. Gavin.
I have nothing from the council.
Well, you're gone. Angela.
I already had my card.
So, council, so, Christie.
I have a few things. I did have a couple of constituents reach out to me and say that the Blue Bash was amazing and awesome. Please do it again next year. And then it was really sad to see the destruction at Park. A lot of people put time and effort into that just to get ruined. It was very sad. And I wanted to bring up this Saturday. Mary said, please, if you are struggling, reach out. Ask for help. That's it.
Thank you. Aaron.
I just want to go on what she said too. An absolute success. I mean, I, what we need to do is recognize everybody that was involved. I know Andrew put a lot of time in it, Mike put a lot of time in it. So anybody that was involved in that, you guys did a wonderful job. It's the top of the town, really, it was. So that was wonderful, and as far as the destruction down there at Park, can we put a camera in there, put a stop to this?
We discussed that, and logistically, that's the problem. A lot of our stuff is landscape. And if you don't, Braxton, speak up at any point, I might chop this up.
Yeah, as soon as I, I mean, as soon as I saw the vandalism, I knew we would ask about cameras. So I've been thinking about it. The problem is, the reason South Side Park was able to get a lot of cameras is we have an electrical closet there, and we have an existing internet radio that'll send signals to the water tower and back to give those cameras connection. It's Mason Park, correct?
Yes, okay.
I was just making sure I got the park correct, but that's something I'm gonna have to just evaluate in terms of, because we're simply switched to Vantec T, we're gonna be switching our camera provider to a more cloud-based system, hoping we can either get cameras, either we could do kind of some subtle connection to avoid that, or we'd have to get a landscape radio out there, which it just requires either some construction or something. Something needs to be high enough, but that's owned by the city, that we can put. And also with those cameras, unless they're individually hooked up with a new system, we would need a switch out there which would require some kind of, I don't know, box or building or something as small as a coat closet.
We have electric.
I don't know if we have.
Is there electric?
No, we don't pay an electric bill in the Mason Park. There is a street light there, Mason.
Masons.
That has a Mason.
That happens. Yeah, I mean, that's one of the biggest problems, it's a little.
And just the time of year, we have identified the suspects on this. So that is being taken care of as we speak. I can't elaborate anymore on that.
That's one.
Other than they've been identified, so, but we just gotta go from there.
Yeah, with the new cameras as well. And need for Vantec T, and we'll begin spring, summer time to bring up some camera loads for some sites that need updated, some sites that need additional coverage, which would include this park. And then I can give at least more details on what those costs are and associated, and see if that's something we want to go down.
And Butler has made a lot of moves to put cameras apart. There are a lot of communities with T R cameras in many of their parks, so, are making continual moves to monitor those types of things more appropriately.
And like Matt said, they have been identified and hopefully go back on the parents for restitution in case of this. And hopefully too, that we can maybe get these individuals to do some community services within the parks.
Yeah.
Sure, let's put you to work back in the parks.
What was the estimated damage cost?
Well, Chris originally, when I talked to him Friday, thought we had to replace all the yellow rails and red platform. But when I looked at Saturday, I didn't see any rails, yellow vent rails at all on that. So I think those are good, so we may have to just, definitely have to do the red platform, that's getting really jacked up. But like I said, that was, that's been in storage for two years, and we just installed that this spring. So that's really bad part of it.
I guess.
Just recently installed.
I mean, that had to make noise, the way that, because they would have had to jump and jump and jump.
I don't know how many individuals were back, whether she can say or not, or.
I really can't say other than there was a witness to the incident, yes. More than one, I'll say.
No, I'm sure, but I'm just like, that would have made noise. I would have thought somebody had been looking out the window, going like, what the heck's going on out there?
Well, there's no one in the house right next to you. Like, the house right next to you, there's no one in the house, for a change.
I was gonna say, there used to be about 25.
That's all.
Gail.
I agree with that, also, a trick or treating on Friday, on Halloween. I know that we had over 200 people go through, so, good turnout.
There was some posts on Facebook, once trick or treating was changed to the 31st on the Friday. Braxton, you see a lot of posts, he says that's probably one of the most active posts that we've had all year. And they will appreciate it going back to Halloween.
All right. Thank you, Gail. Tracy.
I would just like to, you know, say the same as, those guys, Blue Bash was great and a great turnout. I didn't think there was ever gonna be an end to the children that came through there. I wanted to go through the Houghton Forest as well as my granddaughter, but we weren't standing in that long.
It's been more 45 minutes to an hour and a half, week time, so. We'll take that and make sure some more guys and stuff, get that timed down by half an hour.
And I think it was a good turnout for the first time to be back there. So, and I think there are a lot of things that you can take from it to make better, I mean.
We had around 500 people apparently go through the Houghton Woods.
Yeah.
And estimated many of us right around 1,000 throughout the evening, is what people were thinking.
Yeah, the vendors were absolutely thrilled too, like spoke all the vendors.
Fire department ran out in an hour, right?
Wow, good job.
Yeah, we had 75 sandwiches made up. And so.
Awesome.
And I don't know if you guys seen it, but when I left, because I left about 8 o'clock, though all of Madison Park was full, all down the road and into the high school parking lot.
Yeah, we heard that, that people were wanting shuttle service for next year. Definitely looking around.
So we had a park board, the last park board meeting, and it's scheduled time, we sat down and went through lessons learned and what could be done differently for next year to make it even better, so.
Well, it just seems like this last year, the park board mainstream, yeah. Everything that we've had has been really successful, and it turned out really nice. Guys have gotten some more confidence, so.
And we've got some good people on the side of the street, and like the park board is really.
Actually, within the last six months on the park board.
And they really want to be active, I mean, they really do, so.
We've had them on before, they're active, but then it seemed like it tapered down after a year and a half or so. So we gotta kind of equalize that out so we don't get burnout.
Whether I'm the American, so. But we had 17 people go for meeting there, right? So, yeah.
Anything else, Tracy?
No, that's it.
Bill.
Yes, I'd like to make my announcement that I'm going to resign. In fact, in November 30th. And I have talked to Rick Rainey, see what I have to do to write a resignation letter. My resignation.
What are you doing?
Utah.
Where are you going?
Utah.
Utah.
She's gonna take her belt, pine ski in it to say.
Are you up on the mountains at a log camp?
I hate to see you go, but that's amazing, that's awesome, that's gonna enjoy it.
Good for you.
Yeah, Bill's not really sure exactly when is his last date, that's kind of why Rick threw that out there at the end of the month, if Bill happens to leave earlier. I think it gives him that little bit of a leeway, but we did talk to Rick a little bit for the meeting. They're gonna have to, like, Bill said he's gotta do his resignation letter, the four of us, county clerk, city clerk, mayor, and Rick, get that going, and then that'll get put to a caucus. I think they've got 30 days to do that, and tentatively, he wants to do a caucus like December 11th. So it's gonna be processed for the next 45 days. We'll probably have somebody in place, probably for some year. By the time these other meetings roll around, we'll probably pass our council meeting, so. We will miss Bill for sure.
For sure.
I'll miss everybody, I feel.
But what he's doing is committing a lot, I mean, going out there, take care of your mother-in-law, and, a little bit of a different scene there, so.
Lot different.
Lot of trees.
Lot better.
So he wouldn't bring them tonight, case for some reason they're, they can get out there next couple of weeks, they will, so we could be here for the next meeting, or we may not be.
Right.
They did not, I want to be labeled like the Colts just moving the middle.
Well, best of luck to you, Bill.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anything else, Bill?
No, I believe that's it.
That was enough of the bombshell, right?
I just have one thing to announce here. Chris Tatson is our new street superintendent. He was appointed quite two weeks ago, probably right after our last meeting. He took the place of Mark Klein, resigned a couple of months ago. Chris has been here about a year and a half, not quite two years.
and a half, not quite two years, sat down and interviewed a little bit, Tracy and Christie interviewed him as well, I think he's a good asset, so far he's been here a couple of weeks, he's really doing good, he's got a lot of good ideas, he was hoping to be here tonight, but with the tragedy Saturday and being a huge disaster, he had some students reach out, wanted some counseling tonight, and.
Good for him.
Wanted to know if he could miss the meeting, and I said, yeah, that's more important than council meeting, so he's there, but he'll be back here next month on the 17th, so. Moving on from there, does anybody in the audience have anything for the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving.
Well, that'll make it adjourn. Last second, right being adjourned.